I hereby call to order the regular meeting of the Board of Education for Willmet Public School District 39 for Monday, May 18, 2020. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Lisa Schneider-Fabes.
Here.
John Caesaretti.
Here.
Frank Panzika.
Here.
Amy Paling.
Here.
Mark Steen.
Here.
Ellen Sternwiler.
Aaron Stone.
Here.
Thank you. Principal Kelly Jackson will recognize some special student accomplishments, and the WJHS students will lead the Pledge of Allegiance.
We're going to go ahead and share that screen. Hold on.
Good evening. My name is Kelly Jackson, and I am the principal of the 5A campus. I'm excited this evening to join you and to share some of the accomplishments of many of our students across the 5A campus throughout the school year. Every year at our May Board of Education meeting, we enjoy celebrating these accomplishments in different extra and co-curricular activities. While we aren't able to celebrate these accomplishments in person, it makes them no less notable. So please join me in recognizing several different groups and their achievements, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. The first group that we would like to honor are CHS students. While the pandemic halted much of the CHS competition this year, there were some amazing individual accomplishments in the fall. We had three individual state champions at the November 16, 2019 All Grade State Tournament held in Peoria. A big congratulations goes to Maxwell Zhao, fifth grader, who came in first place; sixth grader Sophia Zhao, who came in first place; and eighth grader Keone Osborne, who came in first place. This year was the first year in a few that we've had a JV Science Olympiad team at High Crest. The team had seven students on the roster and included Andrew Lee, Matt Pang, Iman Merchant, Ken Callister, Adidi Karbikar, Jacob Wilkins, and Ariaman Varshney. At the regional meet on February 29 of this year, Matt Pang and Ken Callister competed in the Circuits Lab Competition, taking first place. Adidi Karbikar and Ken Callister competed in the Elastic Launch Glider, taking third place. Jacob Wilkins, Matt Pang, and Ariaman Varshney competed in the Experimental Design Competition, taking fourth place. And finally, to conclude the day, Andrew Lee and Iman Merchant competed in the Mousetrap Vehicle Competition, taking fifth place. It was a great first year back for the JV Science Olympiad team at High Crest Middle School. We congratulate the entire team and their coach, Mr. Nelson, who looks forward to building on their success in the upcoming school year. The WJHS varsity science Olympiad team had a season full of learning, collaboration, and fun. Each student participated in three or four laboratory building and testing events and worked to develop and refine their skills in those events throughout the school year. The team had the opportunity to attend two invitationals and a regional competition this year. Under the leadership of Ms. Maros, the team placed in sixth place at this regional, securing a spot at the state competition. Unfortunately, due to the pandemic, state was canceled this year, and the season was cut short. However, everyone is looking forward to a new competition and a new season next year, which hopefully will be uninterrupted. Our WJHS varsity science Olympiad members are Andrew Xia, Brooklyn Lee, Daniel Cheng, Daniel Madden, Eric Lee, Uchi Brizbois, Hayden Fountain, Hudson Natchway, Jacob Madden, Jimmy Sohigian, Lucy Warner, Mason Butner, Tessa Patel, Tiana Wu, and Varun Murali. Congratulations to all of our SO members. Ms. Jacobs at High Crest led students into competition via Math League. This year, we were impressed that the High Crest Middle School Math League placed 11th as a team, and we had two individuals who also placed. Henry Liu placed 25th in the state, and Arin Emrekin tied for fifth place in the state of Illinois and first place in our region. Arin and his team member Bryce Oh also made the Wall of Fame for perennial math competition. Students made the Wall of Fame for scoring five or six out of six on a competition. Congratulations, Math Leaguers. The WJHS Math Counts team was represented by Brooklyn Lee, Daniel Madden, Jacob Madden, and Victoria Wensky, under the leadership of Mr. Hune and Mr. Chat. They competed at the Math Counts State Competition in Joliet earlier this year, and out of the 60 win schools that competed, the WJHS team placed 14th. Congratulations, Math Leagues. Next, we have Kurtamen. Led by Magistra Shoemaker, the WJHS Kurtamen team was on their way again to winning state. However, the competition was canceled, unfortunately. In Latin, Kurtamen means competition, and students on the Kurtamen team answer questions about Roman culture, derivatives, mythology, and vocabulary, which they work throughout the school year to learn and compete against others in the region. This year's team had 17 members. They include Captain Sophia Allen, Ethan Shu, Max Friedman, Ian Switzer, Charlie Kostannis, Riley Burge, Hayden Fountain, Nikki Megatarian, Keone Osborne, Lexi Vial, Jacob Worling, Rowan Aruho, Owen Candido, Jackson Lau, Thomas Rossman, Evan Shu, and Hudson Smith. The four team members that would have gone to the state competition include Sophia Allen, Ethan Shu, Max Friedman, Ian Switzer. Additionally, every year, over 150,000 Latin students from around the world take the National Latin Exam. Students actually volunteer to take a test and study for many weeks. Six students this year took medals home. Our silver medalists are Ian Switzer, Max Friedman, Ashley Giohas, and Charlie Kostannis. We have two gold medalists, Sophia Allen and Ethan Shu. Congratulations to them, and so as all of the Latin students who worked hard to prepare for the test. Switching from math to language arts, we have several students who have been recognized through writing contests this year. The annual Daughters of the American Revolution Historical Fiction Essay Contest had students research and create their own unique story about traveling on the Mayflower 400 years ago. Our eighth grade first place winner is Sarah Zaria. Seventh grade winners were Ginger Fulkowski in first place, Benjamin Wu in second place, and Ella Tay in third place. There are two New York Times contests that WJHS students participated in. The first was the 15-second vocabulary video contest, where students were challenged to define one of the New York Times words of the day in just 15 seconds in a creative fashion. Of 350 entries of students ages 10 to 14, 15 finalists were selected. Three runners-up, five winners, excuse me, five runners-up, and seven honorable mentions. This year, we had two runners-up from WJHS. They were eighth graders Henry Raymond and Jayden Yi. Their video was featured in the New York Times. The New York Times' first-ever personal narrative contest asked students to write about a meaningful life experience. Out of over 8,000 entries, there were eight winning essays, eight runners-up, and 19 honorable mentions. One of the eight runners-up this year was eighth grader Bida Lundstedt from WJHS, with her narrative titled "The Vigil." Congratulations, Bida. Eighth grader Yun Chang Khan entered her poem "Volcano" in the Spring 2020 Creative Communication Poetry Contest and has been selected for publication in Poetic Power, a publication of poetry and written works from a community of authors. This year, over 400 works were submitted to the Chicago Scholastic Writing Contest, and eighth grader Noah Zeong was one of 53 students who won a silver key for his distinguished critical essay, "The Electoral College Has Got to Go." We are hoping he will be able to attend the Chicago Regional Awards Ceremony later this year. Let's pause here and have a round of applause for all of these students.
You sit on mute.
2020, we want to recognize our 2020 symphonic band members this year for their incredible accomplishment of being one of nine middle school bands in the state of Illinois to make it to the Illinois Superstate Band Festival. While unfortunately, the festival was canceled, we are excited to honor these students tonight. I will begin by reading their names. Asher Alcantara, Lars Arlinsen, Peter Arlinsen, Hannah Asgari, Boyra Azates, Emily Booton, Isaac Cannell, Billy Cannon, Daniel Cheng, Theodore Chevalier, Aiden Corboy, Ruby Cutler, Jared Formacion, Jasmine Feng, Kalen Fitzgerald, Joshua Gioli, Matthew Hepburn, Kaminta Howe, Sabrina Wang, Sophia Wang, Harrison Kopplau, Charles Luskowski, Eric Lee, Matthew Livano, Emily Lynn, Daniel Madden, Jacob Madden, Ella McCurdy, Varun Murali, Ariyan Nashane, Tessa Patel, David Rosenberg, William Shin, Ethan Shu, Max Steen, Ava Stumpf, Edison Sun, Alina Tadelman, Canoa Ween, Matthew Williamson, Tiana Wu, and Andrew Xia. Let's have a round of applause for these symphonic band students. Now, we'd like to hear a little bit more about their accomplishments from symphonic band director, Ms. Anne Dufek. Please note that the music playing in the background is a recording of their symphonic band pieces submitted as a part of their superstate application.
Hello, I'm Anne Dufek, and I am the conductor and director of the Willmet Junior High School Symphonic Band. We'd like to take a moment to recognize the outstanding growth and accomplishments of this year's 2019-2020 Symphonic Band. Many of our young musicians began learning their instruments several years ago here at Willmet, and with the instruction and guidance of our amazing music faculty, our District 39 musicians' symphonic band has developed into one of the finest bands in the state of Illinois. In March, our band performed in the Illinois Graceful Music Association District Eight Band Festival. After our performance, the ensemble earned the highest scores possible from our evaluators, thus earning superior rating with distinction for our performance that we delivered that year. This was a tremendous accomplishment for our band and our entire Willmet band program. In April, based on an audition, our Willmet Junior High's symphonic band was selected as one of the top of their class junior high bands in the 2020 University of Illinois Superstate Concert Band Festival. Only nine junior high bands across the state of Illinois were selected this year. We want to underscore the magnitude of this accomplishment, as our Willmet Junior High's symphonic band has been selected only a handful of times, and the last time was back in 2014. This really illustrates how hard these students have worked over the past several years, both as individuals and as an ensemble, to develop their collective musicianship to this level. Most importantly, this is an incredible accomplishment for our entire school and community that fosters and supports the growth of our students in all disciplines. Again, this is truly an amazing group of students that individually strive for their best, but more importantly, come together, working as a team, to be able to achieve these amazing accomplishments. On behalf of our entire band program, we want to thank our exceptional District 39 and instrumentation team and members of the Board of Education for valuing and supporting music education in our schools. And most importantly, we want to thank our enthusiastic band members, parents and guardians of our young musicians. It's your support and guidance for each and every one of the musicians that helps our students to collectively grow and achieve. Thank you all, and congratulations to the 2019-2020 Willmet Junior High's Symphonic Band.
Congratulations. Now, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Okay, we will go ahead and begin.
United States of America, in the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you to all of our students for all of their hard work, and congratulations on a job well done. We wish you all a great end to the school year.
Thank you. I want to add my congratulations.
Lisa, we can't hear you.
I'm sure she wanted to congratulate everybody.
Yeah.
What a group of accomplishments, and how sad that several of the final activities were curtailed for this year.
Yes, thank you so much. An outstanding group of students and truly impressive accomplishments by each and every one of them. Thank you.
Sorry, I'm back. It just stopped working. I just wanted to finish. Did anybody else say congratulations on behalf of the board yet?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll do it again anyway. Congratulations to all of our teams, the symphonic band, individual and collective award winners. It's fabulous. We're so proud of you. I wish you could have finished the school year. We wish you could have finished the school year. And we look forward to seeing what you can do for those of you who still be with us next year. So again, congratulations. Now, we will move on. I'd like to make an announcement, remind everybody, this is a public meeting. We are all among neighbors and fellow residents. Appropriate conduct is expected from everyone. We ask that people speak only when called upon, that everyone treat each other kindly, with proper respect, and refrain from distracting behaviors such as loud conversations, cheering, clapping, or booing. I seek a motion to approve the minutes of the April 27, 2020 Board of Education and Executive Session meetings.
I move to approve the minutes of the April 27, 2020 Board of Education and Executive Session meetings.
May I have a second?
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded. Board members, are there any comments, errors, or omissions to the meeting minutes? If I don't see you, give a shout out. If not, all those in favor of approving the minutes as submitted, please indicate by saying yay.
Yay.
The motion carries by general consent. Now, we'll move on to public comment. This is an opportunity for the community to address the board. The district has requested that public comments be emailed to publiccomment@willmet39.org. Have we received any public comments via email?
Yes, there are two public comments, and I'll begin by reading the first one from Sarah Squires Doyle. "We have a child finishing up third grade at Ramona. Our questions are for the D39 Board Meeting tonight. What is the plan for opening the schools and in-person learning for the fall? When will the decision be made about opening schools, and by whom will the community parents be consulted in this decision? Thank you." And the second public comment is from Debbie L. I do not have a last name. "Hi, I am a parent of a High Crest student and a fourth through sixth grade teacher outside of the district. I'd like to request that we seriously look into practical, reasonable solutions to getting our schools up and running. The virus is not going away, but more, and more data indicate that school-age children are at the least at risk. I realize this decision lies in the hands of those further up the ladder, but it's time to get together as educators and educate them about how this can be done. Countries like the Netherlands just opened up for grades up to age 12. They understand that children need consistent in-person connections to develop and make progress, peer feedback being one of them. They learn from their environment. They created a reasonable solution by splitting up the kids in half and letting them play, but remaining at a distance from adults. All health-risk individuals and elderly are to stay away. I know this because my current student lives in the Netherlands and is attending my class remotely to finish the year, but at the same time, attending her Dutch school. I also have to state that I would make the choice to teach my kids in my own classroom in a heartbeat, even in the midst of this virus. Ultimately, it's my decision, my choice. I know I'm healthy and realize the risk, and will maintain responsibility outside of the classroom for everyone's safety. Parents who complain can homeschool." Again, choice. "Dr. Kremus Scolie, this needs a massive push and needs to be loud, and I'm asking you to help get the message across. I feel our governor is too focused on the curve to realize these solutions. My own kids are suffering from home learning, and I worry for my youngest, since she is at an age where it's hard to grasp these changes. Every week that goes by, these kids' light get a little bit dimmer. I'm willing to help figure this out. We just need to start now. Thank you, Debbie." And that's it.
Thank you. Now, we'll move to board reports. We'll go to start with committee reports. Facility Committee. And you know, I'm supposed to be doing that report. Dr. Kremus Scolie, is there a way you can send that to me? And we'll start while you do that. Can we?
Lisa, did you say you wanted me to go?
Hello? Sorry.
I couldn't hear you.
For some reason, my computer keeps going in and out. But if I disappear, I'll come back.
Okay, so in the meantime, I'll do the school finance.
Yeah, please.
Yeah, okay. The School Finance Committee met on May 7 as part of the committee as a whole. The Finance Committee reviewed and discussed lunch fees for FY21, as well as an update from the Nutritional Committee's work this school year. The Finance Committee was also presented with the District 39 and WICSE tentative budgets. The committee had the opportunity to review and discuss these budgets, which appear later on tonight's agenda, presentation, and formal approval by the board. The committee discussed budget resolutions, which are also presented later on this evening's agenda. These resolutions include the FY21 Capital Projects Resolution and the FY21 Interfund Transfer Resolution. Finally, the committee received an updated, sorry, received an update and provided input regarding the Transportation Contract Amendments in light of the COVID-19 pandemic, as well as fees and related refunds. This is also presented for approval on this evening's agenda. That's the update.
Thank you very much, Ms. Caesaretti. And for the Facility Development Committee, I'm just going to give a brief report, given that Mr. Sternwiler has had a missed meeting. The Facility Development Committee met on May 7, 2020, as part of the committee as a whole. The committee reviewed and discussed the 2020 construction projects. Those projects included construction at High Crest, Harper, and Central Schools. Now, we'll move to the Liaison Committee Report, the Educational Foundation, Dr. Kremus Scolie.
Yes, the Educational Foundation held a meeting of its trustees on Wednesday, March 13, 2020. I was able to attend that meeting. At the meeting, a slate of new trustees was recommended and approved. I provided an update to the board, including appreciation for the generous donation from the foundation to the Angel Fund of District 39, as well as the hopeful approval for a GRIP grant scheduled later on the agenda. I was able to provide a summary of the remote learning program in District 39 of summer school opportunities and of planning for the return to school in the fall. I highlighted many end-of-year celebrations that are being planned in honor of our students and staff, and thanked everyone for their ongoing support of our mission. The meeting did proceed with updates from committee chairs, and a highlight of the meeting included approval of several GRIP grants for our teachers in District 39. This was the final meeting of the school year for the foundation, and the group looks forward to planning and continuing to support the district through its many events and initiatives next school year.
Thank you very much. And now, we will move to information items, written communication. Dr. Kremus Scolie.
Yes, there were no written communications to the board to report.
Okay, so we move on to administrative announcements?
Absolutely. I have several announcements for the board this evening. One is simply an update regarding remote learning. As a district, we continue to implement remote learning for our students in light of the COVID-19 pandemic and restrictions on in-person instruction at this time. Our programming continues to focus on providing meaningful and manageable remote learning experiences for our students in ways that nurture strong, positive connections between students and teachers, while emphasizing the most essential learning targets in each grade level or subject area. The school calendar has been established through the end of the school year, and special events are being planned to honor and commemorate the many successes of our students throughout this unique fourth quarter of the school year. There are a couple things I did want to mention regarding our planning. Many of our schools are planning remote end-of-year celebrations, including remote field day events, promotion experiences, a few concerts remotely, and other fun activities. Graduation for our eighth graders is scheduled for Tuesday, June 9. We will hold ceremonies for our students at a special outdoor event Tuesday evening. We have a team of administrators and student leaders helping to plan this unique and special graduation, and we look forward to honoring our students and hopefully having a little fun as well to commemorate this important milestone in our students' lives. President Lisa Schneider-Fabes will represent the Board of Education at the event, where we are planning safe social distancing. The event will be livestreamed and recorded for all to watch at a later time, and it will be followed by a car parade of sorts for our students. Specific details for students and families will be provided by WJHS in the coming weeks. We're excited about that. We're really thankful that so many partners came together to help us coordinate this event for our students. Regarding supplies pickup, High Crest and WJHS successfully distributed student supplies and locker materials to students last week despite the rain and the many challenges associated with doing so. I'd like to acknowledge and thank the many staff members who had a part in ensuring the organization and success of these events. Our elementary schools will host their supply pickup and final student farewells on Tuesday, June 9. Specific details for students and families will be provided by schools in the coming weeks. As we plan for the conclusion of this school year, we are also planning for the return to school in fall. We are very hopeful we will be able to return to in-person instruction, but of course, can only do so if it is safe and if it is allowed. We're currently, as the board is aware, the governor has issued a phased reopening plan for Illinois. We are currently in Phase Two of the plan. Phase Three of the governor's plan will allow some businesses and small gatherings of no more than 10 people to reopen. Phase Four of the governor's plan, also known as revitalization, will permit gatherings of up to 50 people, and restaurants will be able to open with limited capacity. It is within Phase Four of the plan that schools will be allowed to reopen under specific guidance by the IDPH and by the Illinois State Board of Education. We are eager to learn more about what those specifics will be, the specific guidance and restrictions, what they will include. And in the meantime, we're in the process of planning a variety of contingency options pending that additional guidance. As we plan, we're considering a variety of factors, and unfortunately, right now, there are more unknowns than there are knowns. We continue to grapple with the many varying pieces of guidance that we're receiving. It is coming a little piecemeal to us at this point, and much of it will depend on how we progress over the next several weeks and even months as we enter the fall season. Some of the things we are considering right now in Some of the things we are considering right now include, first and foremost, the health and well-being of our students and staff. We're also looking at the educational and social emotional needs of our students as we transition back. These will be some key areas that our teachers and our administrators will be grappling with in these last few weeks of school and over the summer as we do planning. We'll be looking at and really carefully considering the physical restrictions and limitations for social distancing. Our schools are really set up, they're designed not for social distancing. They're designed for about 25 students in a classroom, for large group gatherings at lunchtime and at recess, and at so many of the extracurricular opportunities. We certainly can limit some of those, but we will need to think really carefully about how we are planning for and ensuring safe social distancing until there is some, there are some other measures in place that can keep us safe. We'll be looking at the school day, the schedule, transitions between classes, transitions to school and home from school, and we'll be examining a very, a variety of hybrid approaches to instruction. Some of these may include remote learning, some may include in-person instruction, and some may include, again, a hybrid approach to that instruction. We'll be looking at our weekly and our yearly school calendar. I think the public comment the board received earlier was suggesting some examples of what a variety of approaches might involve. We'll be looking at options for remote learning, but we also need to consider the physical space that is in place when and if we can return to in-person instruction. So we'll be looking at the availability and the viability of PPE within our school setting. We have to think about what that means for young children, what it means for students with disabilities, what it means for the interaction of all the individuals who enter our schools. We'll be looking at cleaning and sanitation procedures, even extracurricular programming options. We need to look at transportation, arrival and dismissal procedures. There may be some staggered starts and finishes that we'll be examining. We'll be looking at, again, the guidance and the limitations set forth by the state and by local authorities. And many of us are advocating to the best of our ability at this point, but there are so many unknowns that we must grapple with and adhere to as well. So there's additional items that we need to look at, such as staffing, employment agreements, working conditions, and how we can support and staff our schools in light of the restrictions that will be in place. So again, there really is a lot for us to consider and for us to plan for. And unfortunately, we currently have more questions than we have answers. We're in the process of forming a committee of teachers and administrators who will work throughout the summer to plan for the logistics of reopening school in the fall, including curricular and pacing adjustments, looking at scheduling and calendar adjustments, various modalities of instruction in light of whatever guidance the health agencies provide us, and then the other factors affecting our ability to ensure a robust educational program for our students during the pandemic and hopefully our global transition out of it. Our plans will be flexible and adaptable to whatever opportunities and limitations exist as we reopen schools, and we will remain focused on ensuring meaningful and manageable learning experiences for our students that support the academic and social emotional growth of all students in targeted and connected ways. We, as we build these plans, we will be looking for feedback from parents and from students as well. We did some surveys early on in remote learning, and as we begin to transition out, we'll be looking for some insight there as well. But again, we have to keep in mind that we are governed by and, and must adhere to some of the restrictions that will be set forth by the governor, by the health departments, and by the Illinois State Board of Education. As we plan for the return to school in the fall, we will be planning for the hopeful, hopeful return to in-person instruction, but again, we'll be building contingency plans as well. In the meantime, we're also planning for summer school. Summer school programming, our designs will include a variety of options, and we've communicated these out to families. Registration just started today, I believe, opened up to families to enroll. We have, we're focusing on academic programming this summer. We know that we will be remote for most, if not all, of the summer programming. But we are offering programming, including extended school year for those who qualify, summer basic camp, and summer enrichment camp focused on academics. New this year, we have also added a Jump Start to Fall program. And this program really is designed to give students a two-week kind of jump start to the fall restart of school. And so we're hoping that many of our families will at least choose the Jump Start program to launch the new school year, if not engage in some of the summer learning opportunities as well. We know how valuable the structure has been for our students, and we're happy to continue to provide that and, and support those opportunities over the summer. Again, registration for the programs launched today. We'd encourage all families to consider signing up, and there's more information on our website. At this point, I'm going to pause. Happy to answer any questions the board might have or take any feedback regarding remote learning planning and planning for the fall, if there are any, before moving on to some of the other administrative reports.
Or Frank?
I just wanted to, one, appreciate all the, the work that, that you've been doing to go through contingencies, think about what could be possible and, and hopefully looking way outside of the norms on, on how to optimize within whatever conditions end up. I particularly wanted to appreciate, I guess, the addition of the Jump Start program that you mentioned. I think that one of the, the problems for a lot of students is going to be the discontinuity of, of learning. And the fact that you're proactively addressing that, I think is, is a really important step, and I'm glad that that opportunity exists and hopefully a number, not a lot of parents will, will appreciate that and take advantage of it.
Thank you.
Other board members? I want to echo that this jump start to fall sounds like a great idea.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, you want to continue?
Absolutely. So other announcements to make. The 2019-2020 school calendar has been established. The last day of student attendance will be Tuesday, June 9. Wednesday, the 10th, and Thursday, the 11th will be used for remote learning planning days. Each school district has been provided the opportunity to use five remote learning planning days this school year to plan for remote learning, but also professional development, teacher collaboration, curriculum alignment, and planning for the transition back to in-person instruction. So District 39 used one remote learning planning day on April 13th, and then the 10th and the 11th will be used for just that, teacher collaboration, curriculum alignment, planning for the 2020 and 21 school year, and the return to school, and other important end-of-year meetings and transition planning. As has been noted, the other adjustments on the final calendar include the use of an emergency day on March 13th. That was the first day in which school was canceled. So that counts as an emergency day. We also converted April 24th from a non-attendance day to an attendance day, which essentially means it was a day initially reserved for institute day activities and parent-teacher conferences, and instead we transitioned that back to be an attendance day for remote learning. So those adjustments are noted on the calendar attachment. The ISB is still working through some guidance for districts on how to submit that calendar via our electronic systems, but we're confident that by June, they will have those in place. And so we appreciate the board's support. You'll see that later on this evening's agenda for those calendar adjustments. I do have a very important announcement regarding appointments. We have two elementary assistant principal appointments noted later on this evening's personnel report. We're very proud to announce the appointment of these two elementary assistant principals. First, we have Taylor Harvey. Taylor has, is being appointed to the Assistant Principal Position at Central School. Taylor began her teaching career in District 39 as a learning behavior specialist in LBS. As an LBS, Taylor worked at Highcrest, as well as at WJHS, supporting students with learning, cognitive, and social emotional needs. Additionally, she has worked as an intervention specialist and a student services coordinator in many of our schools. Taylor completed her Master's in Educational Leadership at Northeastern University, and we are thrilled to have Taylor joining our administrative team. We look forward to her continued contributions to our schools in this new role. We also have Lisa Anderson. Lisa Anderson is being appointed to the Assistant Principal Position at Ramona. Lisa has most recently served with distinction, excuse me, at, as the Assistant Principal at Kipling School in Deerfield. Prior to that, Lisa worked as a school psychologist in North Shore District 112 and Hawthorne School District in Vernon Hills. During this time, she collaborated with general education teachers, special educators, and administrators alike. She led the special education process for her teams and supported students, parents, and staff in navigating support and growth for all students. Lisa has earned her Master's in Educational Leadership from Northeastern, and we are very happy to welcome Lisa to our District 39 team, and we're confident that she will prove to be an asset to the work we will accomplish together. Both Taylor and Lisa are watching this evening's meeting remotely tonight and look forward to the opportunity to meet the board in person when it is safe to do so. Moving on to a few other, oh, I see claps, I see waves to our new administrators. Thank you so much for that. Moving on to a couple of other brief reports, property tax assessment appeals. The Board of Education approved a resolution in November, on November 12th, 2018, authorizing intervention in property tax assessment appeals filed with the PTAB and with the Circuit Court of Cook County in accordance with policies and limitations established by the Board of Education. The property index number and the estimated refunds are listed for new property tax interventions at the PTAB and Circuit Court of Cook County this month. Regarding our Reflections Event, Reflections, the board will remember, is a celebration hosted annually in honor of our retirees and also in honor of our distinguished employees being recognized for milestone years of service in our district. Unfortunately, with limitations on group gatherings this year, we have been forced to reconceptualize our end-of-year reflections celebration. So we are working on a remote celebration, including presentation of gifts and a video recognition for all. The remote celebration will be held remotely on Wednesday, May 27th, at 7:00 PM. Also, on this evening's agenda, you will see a recommendation regarding administrators 2020 and 21 contractual salary. In keeping with the board's philosophy of matching revenues to expenditures, the Board of Education has authorized the superintendent to increase aggregate administrator salaries indexed to the computer, sorry, the Consumer Price Index, CPI, which is 1.9 applicable this year. You'll also see later in this evening's agenda a letter of agreement for support staff union and contract, a contract extension. The collective bargaining agreement between the Support Staff Union and the Board of Education expires at the end of July. Just prior to school closures, this March negotiations started. Both the SSU and the board quickly recognized the difficulty in negotiating remotely. Therefore, a contract extension for two years was proposed, and the SSU membership has agreed. The extension provides for a salary increase of 4% for next year and a CPI increase in the 21-22 school year. That concludes my reports to the board. I'm happy to answer any questions or take any feedback on any of that.
Board members, any questions? Okay, the one I just want to, on behalf of the board, welcome Taylor and Lisa. My computer froze when everybody was doing the wave, so I just want to verbalize, welcome. We're thrilled. Are you there? Sorry, everybody.
It's okay, we can hear you now.
It's been like this all night. Anyway, I, I'm so sad that the Reflections Celebration can't be in person. So then, before my computer glitches again, maybe we should go to annual business.
I had one real quick one. On the reflections, you said there's a, it'll be on May 27th. Normally, the board has the opportunity to participate. Is that something that we could or should be involved in?
Yes, we will get you an invitation so that you can attend remotely. Each school is hosting their own celebration. Those invitations are going out shortly, and we'll make sure that the board has the opportunity to sign in and view the, the video and the celebration as well.
Great. That's always a nice event.
Thank you.
Other board members? Okay, we'll move on to annual business. Dr. Kremis Goli.
Thank you. While the lunch fees are typically approved earlier in the year with the rest of the school fees, the district was waiting until the Nutrition Committee had completed its review of the lunch program before submitting the 2020-21 fees for approval this month. So Ellen has an update and this report for us.
Thank you. So based on last year's results of the parent and student surveys, the Nutrition Committee focused on providing desirable cleaner menu items, as well as increasing fruit and vegetable offerings. This year, the district offered a variety of new, healthier menu items, as well as increasing fresh fruit and vegetable options. In order to continue offering these healthier menu items, the school cooks require an extra half hour per day for food pepper, food preparation. Lunch fees have not increased since fiscal year 1718, even though food costs continue to rise. The lunch program is a self-sustaining program, and thus the lunch fees are designed to offset the costs. The recommendation is to increase the fiscal year 21 lunch fees to $3.75 per day for kindergarten through sixth grades and $4.15 per day for seventh and eighth graders. This is an increase of 15 cents per day for kindergarten through sixth grades and 20 cents per day for seventh and eighth grades. Are there any questions?
Okay, we're, oh, sorry, John.
Yeah, not really a question, just more of a thank you for all the work that you've done in making all these calculations and, and making, I think, the, the school lunch is much more healthy, really modest cost.
Thanks.
Are there other board members? I think I'm back. Yeah, okay, so we go on to the tentative budget?
Absolutely, thank you. I will introduce this, and Ellen is going to present on both the tentative budget as well as the, the Wixi budget. So in order to abide by truth and taxation statutes, it is necessary for the Board of Education to adopt a tentative budget. Laws require approval of a tentative budget for public display at least 30 days prior to adopting a final budget. We are also required to hold a budget hearing prior to final adoption. Notice of the August public hearing will be published on May 21st. Ellen has the reports on the District 39 and the Willmet Community Special Education Agreement budgets. And again, she'll move right from one to the other as, as she is presenting.
Just give me one moment here, I'm pulling out my presentation.
Thank you.
Everybody can see that, I'm assuming? Yes, okay, great, thank you. So tonight, we are presenting District 39's 2021 tentative budget. In April, a draft of the budget was shared with the community. Due to the impact of COVID-19, the budget has been reduced by a few factors. The first is a $275,000 reduction in property tax collections, which represents 0.5% of property tax revenue. We also decreased $316,000 in state revenue, which includes a reduction in evidence-based funding and quarterly mandated categorical revenues. The assumption for categorical revenues for next year is that we would receive three payments instead of four. We also decreased corporate personal property tax, personal property replacement tax by $49,000. The operating funds budget reflects an organization's day-to-day operations. This is the budget that the state examines most closely to assess the overall financial stability of each school district. In fiscal year 21, the tentative budgeted revenues are expected to exceed expenditures by $22,000 prior to other uses of funds. After taking into account the 7.5 million in account transfers to the Capital Projects Fund for one-time planned construction projects and 0.8 million transfer to the debt cir, to the debt and .8 million transfer to the debt service fund for the repayment of debt certificates, the ending balance is estimated to be $29.6 million, which represents 45.4% of operating expenditures. This fiscal year 21 budget starts with the projected ending fund balances from the fiscal year 20 budget. When the final budget is presented in August, it will reflect the actual fund balances at the end of fiscal year 20 as the starting point. As a result of the higher-than-planned bond issuance of $1 million and the impact of COVID-19, the district anticipates the fiscal year 20 operating fund balance to be higher than budgeted, which could offset potential decreases in funding and increases in anticipated costs due to COVID-19 as we reopen school in the fall. Capital projects transferred include the cost of approved construction projects that will take place this summer at Central Elementary School to support the kindergarten enrichment program as well as the addition of large space air conditioning in the cafeteria. Also included in the budget are the approved construction projects at High Crest Middle School to convert the old library and media center to three classrooms and add large space air conditioning in the auditorium. In addition, the budget includes estimated construction costs to prepare for KEEP 39 at Ramona and McKenzie Elementary Schools. However, these plans are still under development. Oops. One second, please. Um, the tentative fiscal year 21 budget is based on current data and information available to date. As more information becomes available, adjustments will continue to be made as appropriate. At this point, the impact of COVID-19 is unknown. As we look at potential financial implications, it is important to remember that 84% of our operating revenue comes from property taxes. On the expenditure side, 80% of our operating expenditures are for salaries and benefits. There are many factors that may affect funding in the future as a result of COVID-19. A reduction in the property tax revenue due to Consumer Price Index, new property growth reductions, and reduced property tax collections may impact future revenues for years into the future. State funding levels may also affect the financial position of the district. Funding may be reduced for both evidence-based funding and mandated categoricals as well. On the expenditure side, there is also potential for increased expenses, including pension cost shift, health insurance premiums, as well as any additional costs associated with reopening in-person instruction. Many of the financial implications of COVID-19 are just simply unknown at this time. But revisions to the tentative budget shall be incorporated to reflect the most current information available prior to the approved budget in August. In the non-operating funds, there is a small surplus of $23,000. Our anticipated funds balance at June 30th, 2021 is estimated at 1.86 million. Non-operating funds includes the transfers from operations and maintenance reviewed earlier. All health, life, safety projects will continue to be paid out of the operating funds in fiscal year 21. The fund balance for all funds is anticipated to be $31.5 million at the end of June 2021, based on starting the year with this June 30th, 2020 budget. As additional information is received in the next few months and we finalize the fiscal year 20 financials, the final budget will be adjusted before a public hearing in August. After approval tonight, the budget information will be available on the district website and a hard copy at the Office for Public Review. In addition, there will be a publication of notice of public hearing for Monday, August 24th, 2020. Are there any questions before I go into the Willmet Community Special Education Agreement?
Board members, are there any questions?
Not really a question. Yeah, not really a question, but, you know, viewers might want to understand some of those projections that you've run, Ellen, and talked to us about in our committee meeting, you know, the five-year projections. Are we posting those as well? Okay. I found them to be useful. I think we all did about what.
Yeah, at this point, I didn't have them as part of the final board report as we're still trying to figure out exactly where we're going to end the fiscal.
Yeah, right.
For 2021, I think as we get further into the summer and we have a better idea of where we're actually going to end this year, we'll know how that rolls forward into future years and as we get a better idea of the state funding and what the property tax revenue may look like. I think there's just a lot of unknowns at this point.
Okay. I did.
I will add that those, the committee meeting was recorded and is available for viewers who might be interested in hearing that discussion and better understanding some of the items that the Board is contemplating at this point, that is available for those who might be interested.
Thank you.
Others? Okay.
Okay, we'll keep going here then. So tonight, we're also presenting the Willmet Community Special Education Agreement for the fiscal year 21 tentative budget as well. The District 39 serves as the fiscal agent on behalf of this cooperative with Avoca. This is basically a flow-through entity with minimal activity now that the IDA grant funds flow directly to each district. This is a balanced budget. This last slide shows key dates in the budget development calendar that was presented in January 2020. We are moving towards the end of the process with your approval tonight and the announcement of the public hearing on August 24th. We will have the public hearing and then the final approval of the fiscal year 21 budget. The budget will then be submitted to the ROE, ISB, and the county clerk prior to September 30th. Are there any other questions at this point?
Board members? Okay. I don't see any.
I'm all done with my piece.
Okay, sorry.
I'm just making sure you are waiting for me.
No, I was waiting for these computer glitches to pass. This is very frustrating. I apologize. So we're moving on then to budget resolutions? Wait, no, we're doing, I'm sorry, Carrie, I'm a little flustered here.
That's okay. You are right. We are moving on to budget resolutions. And first up is fiscal year 2021 transfer of funds from the Operations and Maintenance Fund to the Capital Projects Fund. And this resolution authorizes the district to do accounting transfers from O and M Fund to the Capital Projects Fund. The transfers will occur after board approval of payments. This approach removes expenditure spikes in the O and M Fund due to one-time construction projects. We spoke of this at the committee meeting.
Any questions, or should we move on to the student transportation contract? I think we'll do that.
Before we move. Before we move on to the student transportation contract, the other item is for the inter-fund loan from the Education Fund to the Operations and Maintenance Fund for fiscal year 2021. This is a short-term inter-fund loan from the Education Fund to the Operations and Maintenance Fund to permit timely payments of construction projects. The short-term loan maintains adequate fund balances and if needed, will be repaid by the end of the fiscal year 21. The Board approved the same resolution in FY19 and FY20, but did not need to use it.
Now, are there any questions, Board members? Okay, seeing none, let's move on to the transportation contract amendments.
Absolutely. Thanks. The district has an interest, as we've talked previous meetings, in interest in ensuring our bus drivers continue to be paid both in accordance with the Board's direction that was issued in March when school first closed and in order to make sure that we have bus drivers and buses available when school returns to in-person instruction. Tonight, we have an amendment to our transportation agreement that will allow for the district to continue to make partial payments to North Shore Transit during the school closure this year as well as reduced rate increases for FY21 and FY22. Ellen has this report and some additional information she'd like to supply for the Board.
Thank you. Under the amendment to the Student Transportation Services agreements with North Shore Transit, District 39 will pay $7,583.59 per day for each scheduled school day not in session during the statewide ordered school closure from March 17th through April 30th, 2020, and will pay $3,507.41 per day for each scheduled school day not in session from May 1st through June 11th, 2020. This represents 80% of normal costs in March and April and 37% of normal costs in May and June. As part of this agreement, North Shore Transit reduced the rate increases in fiscal year 21 from 4% to 1.3% and decreased the rate increases for fiscal year 22 from 4.25% to 2%. The administration recommends approval of this amendment tonight. Are there any questions?
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you.
Moving on to student and staff planning?
Yes, this is an annual report. Each spring, we provide an update to the Board regarding the planning for the upcoming school year. Rather than waiting until April to open registration, it did begin in mid-February. As you all know, we transitioned into remote learning. Attention kind of was cast otherwise, and yet we've still proceeded with registration. So this earlier date allowed us to have a better, to have better information as to the number of students who are planning to attend District 39 next school year. Elements that have been a part of next year's planning include kindergarten enrichment, additional staff for mental health support for students, and continuing summer construction. Finally, as we continue to plan for the fall, we will be considering a variety of in-person and remote teaching and learning schedules by having, teaching and learning schedules, as I talked about earlier, by having a variety of options planned. We will be planning for a variety of ways in which that will deliver instruction, and so we'll be needing to follow guidance, again, of state and local authorities. Dr. Glouacki has this report for us.
Good evening, everyone. As Dr. Kremis Gully said, this is an annual report that highlights our initial planning for next school year. A lot can change and likely will, especially this year, but as we start, we have to know, go with what we know. This early student registration in mid-February happened about two months earlier than what we typically do, and that has been incredibly helpful in our ability to plan. Currently, there appears to be a slight decline in student enrollment in kindergarten at a few of our schools. This happens from time to time. It kind of ebbs and flows, as well as at certain grade levels depending on the specific school. These slight fluctuations are expected and typical as cohorts move throughout our grades. Enrollment at High Crest continues to be relatively stable, and Willmet Junior High is, again, continuing to have the double-A teams for seventh and eighth grade as we've had for the last couple of years. As Dr. Kremis Gully said, we're planning for kindergarten enrichment, kindergarten enrichment and enhancement for District 39, also known as KEEP 39, at Central and Harper. There are approximately 60 kids registered for KEEP 39 at each school, equating to about three afternoon sections, both at Central and at Harper. Department of Curriculum Instruction continues to work with staff in designing and planning the activities that will be a part of the enrichment program for students. Special education support continues. It increased this year as we had planned for last spring with the addition of learning behavior specialists and related service personnel. In addition to support with academic learning, the mental and emotional health of our students will be a top priority as we work to transition back to our traditional school. As a result, each elementary school will have at least two full-time mental health professionals, a psychologist and a social worker. High Crest and Willmet Junior High will each have at least five full-time mental health professionals, again, a combination of psychologists and social workers. This will be achieved mostly through the reallocation of some existing positions to highlight the need for the mental health support. The information in this report and what has been shared tonight reflects our usual planning process. This year has not been a usual year. Just as the spring came with a lot of uncertainty, so does the fall. And as Dr. Kremis Gully mentioned earlier in the meeting, we continue to review the guidance provided by state and local authorities regarding the governor's phase-in plan, safe ways in which we can, we may resume school in the fall, and any necessary adjustments we may need to make staffing to staffing as a result of these recommendations coming our way. We recognize the adjustments to these plans may be necessary, and we're prepared to make them in the best interest of students. So right now, this is what we know, but stay tuned. It will change likely.
Thank you very much. Are there questions, Board members? Ms. Stone?
I have a question and a comment. The question, you may have answered this, but I want to make sure I understand. In the written report under Staffing Needs Elementary Schools, it says the number of K-4 classes continues to decline slightly at some grade levels. Is this a decrease within a cohort with people moving out? Or is it like the amount of kids in a certain grade is now less than the amount of the kids that used to be in that grade? Or is it some combination of both? Do you know?
It's the result of cohorts moving through the grade levels. So for example, right now, we are expecting only three kindergarten groups, classes at Ramona. And typically, this time each year, there's usually already enough for four kindergarten classes at Ramona. So that just happens to be a function of this cohort of students. And that, that happens from time to time, especially when you're only talking about four or five classes at any one grade level within one school. When you look 5'8", that fluctuation doesn't seem as dramatic because there's 16 homerooms or 15 homerooms, depending on the grade level.
Okay, thank you. And then my comment, I really want to applaud the decision to add and reallocate mental health professionals because I think it's addressing a need that exists, and I am glad that we are addressing it. So thank you very much for that.
Other Board members? Okay, terrific. So now, this is the opportunity for the community to address the Board. It's our second time for public comment. The district has requested that public comments be emailed to publiccomment@willmet39.org. Have we received any public comments via email?
There are no new public comments.
Therefore, we will continue with our agenda. The next order of business is the consent agenda. Under action items, are there any items that the Board would like pulled from the consent agenda? Okay, Mr. Panzika, please proceed with the motions.
I move to approve the personnel report dated May 18th, 2020. I move to approve the Administrator's 2020-2021 contractual salary increases indexed to Consumer Price Index, CPI, which is 1.9%. I move to approve the 2019-2020 final school year calendar. I move to approve the fiscal year 2021 lunch fees as contained in Exhibit A of the report. I move to approve the fiscal year 21 tentative budget as contained in this report for immediate public display. And further, I move to approve the publication of notice of a public hearing on the tentative budget to be held at 7:00 PM prior to commencing the regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting on Monday, August 24th, 2020. I move to approve the Willmet Community Special Education Agreement fiscal year 21 tentative budget as contained in this report for immediate public display. And further, I move to approve the announcement of a public hearing on the tentative budget to be held at 7:00 PM prior to commencing the regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting on Monday, August 24th, 2020. I move to approve the attached resolutions authorizing accounting transfers from the Operations and Maintenance Fund to the Capital Projects Fund. And I move to approve the attached resolution authorizing an inter-fund loan from the Educational Fund to the Operations and Maintenance Fund. I move to approve the amendment to the Student Transportation Services Agreement with North Shore Transit and ST to pay. to pay $7,583,000, $7,583.59, excuse me, per day for each scheduled school day not in session during the statewide ordered school closure from March 17 through April 30, 2020, and to pay $3,507.41 per day for each scheduled school day not in session from May 1 through June 11, 2020. In addition, I move to approve the amended regular transportation rate increases of 1.3% for fiscal year 21 and 2% for fiscal year 22. I move to approve the accounts payable for bills listed between April 28, 2020 and May 18, 2020 in the following amounts. Educational Fund, $243,273.49. O and M Fund, $157,845.83. Depth Service, $11,676.31. Capital Projects, $5,756.06. Total All Funds of $418,551.63. I move to approve the manual checks and voided checks in the Capital Projects Fund issued between April 28, 2020 and May 18, 2020 in the following amounts. Educational Fund, $558,784.71. O and M Fund, $14,177.11. Transportation Fund, $35.46. Capital Projects Fund, a negative $117,703. Total All Funds of $455,294.28.
Wait, may I have a second?
Second.
The motion having been made and seconded, would the clerk please call the roll?
John Caesaretti?
Yes.
Frank Panzika?
Yes.
Amy Paling?
Yes.
Mark Steen?
Yes.
Aaron Stone?
Yes.
Mrs. Schneider-Fabes?
Yes.
I I will move to approve the attached letter of, the attachment to the letter of agreement extending the contract for support staff union members.
And I will second that.
Sorry about that. Back. Would the clerk please call the roll? Thank you, Frank.
John Caesaretti?
Yes.
Frank Panzika?
Yes.
Amy Paling?
Yes.
Mark Steen?
Yes.
Aaron Stone? Yes.
Mrs. Schneider-Fabes?
Yes.
The ayes have it. Motion carries.
And just for the record, the first motion, did that pass as well?
Yes, it did. Thank you. The consent agenda passed.
Thanks.
You couldn't read my lips, right? Oh, um, okay, so now we're going to move to conference items. Old business. Is there any new business? Is there any good in welfare, Ms. Stone?
Yes, um, so you can't see it. It's off camera. But on one of my shelves to my right is a picture of my kids when they were five and three. And I was looking at that earlier today and thinking about that's exactly how old they were when they both started walking through the doors of District 39 buildings to start school and to get some special services. And August is now about to finish his time in D-39. And while it's gone way too quickly, the education they have received has been nothing short of phenomenal. I remember sitting in the auditorium at McKenzie about eleven years ago, listening to Dr. Welter talk about what kindergarten was going to be like and going home and calling my mom, who had been a teacher for decades, and just telling her how great I thought it was going to be and how excited I was for my oldest to start school there. There are a thousand things I could say that they have done over the years, but just one for each kid. My daughter finagled her schedule, purposely took chemistry last summer so that she could work a semester of guitar at Nutria into her schedule this semester. And that was because she had taken a guitar quarter at Willmet Junior High. And because that option was offered to her, it sparked an interest in guitar. And my son, I still remember him coming home in third grade with pictures of things in outer space that had been taken by the Hubble Telescope because his class had Skyped with a professor in Maryland who had worked on the Hubble Telescope. And there are thousands of other things I could talk about, but each of them has had an amazing opportunity and I am very grateful for all the hard work. They talk about, you know, it takes the village. It really does. And it takes the community of District 39, teachers and staff and administrators and everybody that has given my kids a phenomenal education and I'm very, very grateful for it. Thank you.
Frank?
I have two things. One, I wanted to congratulate all the eighth-grade graduates. Normally, the school board has the privilege of being on the stage and presenting the diplomas to the graduates. And it's sad that we won't be able to do that this year. I'm sure it's even sadder that the students won't have the formal graduation that they normally have. But I'm sure what's being planned is, is going to be great. Unfortunately, as a school board member, I'll be missing the, the opportunity that, that we're normally very grateful to be able to, to do at the end of the year. So congratulations to the eighth-grade graduates and look forward to some great years in your next adventures. And I have one other thing, just to, it's like a heads up. For Memorial Day, the Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts of the Willmet Community are going to be putting flags up. So watch for those flags. The, there should be, if everything goes well, over 5,000 of those planted around Willmet.
Thank you, Frank, and well said for the eighth graders and look forward to see those flags. Mr. Steen?
I just wanted to ask, are we planning something for the two D-39 eighth graders who are going to avoid the embarrassment of being hugged by their parents on the school board this year? Because I really am not sure that is fair to the, all of the other eighth graders that have come through and had to be hugged by their parents.
Mr. Steen, do you want to call your eighth grade, like, should we call the eighth graders right now and let them?
Do it now. Now would be really embarrassing.
Yeah, that's true.
Ms. Stone?
I can tell you that our family, I own a bullhorn and a cowbell. And the parade, I've already told my son, is going to be a lot of noise coming out of our car and he is going to die a slow death of mortification in the backseat. There's, yes, so.
There you have it.
To get you one way or the other here.
Others? Okay, may I have a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss collective bargaining and specific personnel?
I'm, I move to adjourn to executive session to discuss negotiating matters between public school bodies and its employees or the representatives or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees. And for the appointment, appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body.
May I have a second?
Second.
Have motion having been made and seconded, will the clerk please call the roll?
John Caesaretti?
Yes.
Frank Panzika?
Yes.
Amy Paling?
Yes.
Mark Steen?
Yes.
Aaron Stone?
Yes.
Mrs. Schneider-Fabes?
Yes.
Motion carries. We are now adjourned to executive session.
This is Tony. I'll be pushing you to the executive session room, breakout room. Heather, you're going in there as well?
Yes.
Okay. Ellen, you as well?
Yes, and Kristen also.
And Kristen and Katie, I'm assuming you're out here with me?
Yes, I will be out here with you.
Okay. Recording again. Go ahead.
I need a motion to adjourn the regular meeting.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
The time is 9:28. Motion having been made and seconded, all those in favor of adjournment, please indicate by saying yay.
Yay.
Motion carries by general consent. Thank you, everyone.
Katie Lee, thanks for staying around.
And she went out right at the end.
Good.
Bye.
Are we okay? All right.
We're out.